Motion to suspend.
Trichinolitis?
Yeah. Motion to second, suspend the orders.
Hey, you are.
I've got some questions here.
No. Sure.
All right, six o'clock, we'll call the.
We'll just have some pledges.
A pledge, ladies and gentlemen, to say the flag of the United States of America in the Republic of British Commons, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Black.
Here.
Mr. Deere.
Here.
Mr. Jefferson is absent, Mr. Saya.
Here.
Mr. Webber.
Here.
Attorney Schwer.
Here.
All right, thank you. First on our agenda, we have approval of the regular meeting minutes from June 12th. If anyone has any discussion on that, or do you have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from June 12th?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, you have approval of the claims, June 12th through July 14th. Is there any discussion on any of the claims?
Christians' work isn't on here yet.
Morning for this, yes.
Oh, it is, for the trees?
Yes.
Okay. Just didn't see it then.
And it's again, Mr. Coughlin's.
Yeah, I seen Coughlin's. Okay.
All right, any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, they have a motion to approve the claims, June 12th through July 14th.
So moved.
Motion to have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Claims are approved. All right, now next, we have our department reports. Scott Treter.
Uh, in the package is Wester engineers claim to be approved for payment through the loan. And it's been approved by Mike Kleinfield already. I just need yours.
All right, does anybody have any question or discussion on this? All right, there's no discussion or questions, we have a motion to approve the invoice from Wesler.
Make a motion, we approve.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? All right. Anything else, or?
I have, um, Mr. Sementos. Road closure?
Show the road closure.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, for you guys to sign.
Okay.
Um, does he, do they need to approve this?
Yes.
I'm going to approve that. And it's the normal ones that he always sends, ones for the town marshal, um, and where the parade will be, and the other one is just the approval.
Okay, just data?
Yes.
You ever, the times?
Uh, seven AM to five PM.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any questions on that? Do you have a motion to approve the road closure application?
We'll make a motion for the road closure for the pork fest.
All right, have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Anything else, Lori?
No, that's all.
Okay. Attorney Schwer.
I was asked to draft the ordinance concerning apparently frontier, but this would apply to any, uh, organization that does communication work in the town, that they're approaching the town with numerous utility locations at one time. We just don't have the manpower, it can't be done. And sometimes, uh, many times, uh, the location requests are for property that they really can't get to in the timeframe they said they would. So people are having, uh, flags marked utilities in New York for, you know, three weeks, a month, longer, and, uh, they start to disappear. And then the communications company contacts the town for another agreed location. So I tried to come up with something that I thought would solve that issue. The first part, I forwarded this to everyone, but it was late today, so I don't know if anyone got hits to read it. But the first amendment, uh, the ordinance, I decided it should go under, um, communication facilities. Went through the ordinance book, didn't know where else to put it. So I decided, well, we need to have it defined, so I amended the definition of a communication facility include, uh, the items underground wires, cables, fiber optics conduit, and then any above ground installations that may splice them and connect them and what have you. So that's the definition. And then I did a, uh, yeah, had a discussion with Lori, and, um, I thought that we should have a, a number. I put in twenty. I'd, I'd be, I think in some communications with Cory, that was, uh, could be done per week. And the concern was, uh, that my understanding, correct me at any time, Lori, if I misunderstood, but Cory said, well, they'll just, if you just put a limit on it, they'll come and say, we want the six hundred feet on block so and so and include a lot of places. So I said, that includes, uh, both private residents or a business. Now, if Cory has the time, he can be flexible with this, but when he doesn't, he needs to have something to, he can say he can't do it, and this is why. So I put in twenty in a, in a one week, uh, any one week period, and then, um, to try and avoid where we're locating it, and there's no realistic way they're going to do the work, and then the town has to go back and relocate, I simply put, you can't request it more than two weeks in advance, uh, prior to the installation. Now, we all know whether things change, you know, we can be flexible, but again, I'm trying to come up with something that has teeth in it. And, um, so I, I, uh, put in the two weeks and, uh, also after talking to Lori, um, Cory had suggested adding, no facility location requests shall be extended or relocated. So in other words, we're not coming back because she didn't get to it in a month or two. And then the penalty, uh, I think if I remember correctly, the ordinance provided, uh, if they violated, they get fined fifty bucks. And we have a section of the ordinance, uh, that provides that it's twenty-five hundred dollars a day where there's a violation, and, uh, each violation each day is considered a new violation. It gives you some teeth, it doesn't mean you have to do it, but if they start coming in and, and just roughshod in the town, doing what they want, they got something to face. So, anyway, that's why I did it. If you want me to change it, I'm sure more than happy to do that. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
No, I, I think that sounds good, I mean, you've got the, the data to support it, which is the located request log, so like, our May locates was, was eighty, and our, our June was a hundred and seventy-three, so, you know, the data's, the data's there to say, hey, this is, this is a problem. And this is costing the, the town money.
Uh, one thing I'm just gonna mention to you guys, I, I myself, I'm a contractor that calls and locates, and so I'm familiar with the system, how they work. One thing they're pushing now, from the eight-one-one side, is to call in ahead of time and do design locates. So that might be part of the issue, is if they're anticipating getting to that, that area, say they're gonna install in August, they're calling in now, getting that three blocks located, so that their field engineers can come out and go, A, B, C is where our pedestals are gonna go, or our boxes, and then those expire because they're not to it yet, and then they recall, because it's no longer a design locate request, it's now an install locate request, so you can't extend that ticket. So it's two tickets, it's two addresses, could be two, two weeks apart, could be two months apart, but that's what eight-one-one's pushing for, is those two separate tickets for the same address for the same project. So just FYI.
Yeah, is there a way that, I guess, does the town get notified that it's a design locate, or just a?
It sh- it should be, because when I have to put them in as a contractor, I have to note whether it's a design locate request or an install locate request. I, I don't know, because I'm not, you know, I don't get the notification of the install, so I don't know what the town gets, but I know I'm seeing it as two separate when I pull up my design tickets.
You might want to check on state law, because we deal with this all the time, they have rules on locates and what you, what, uh, the town has to do, and doesn't have to do, but they're pretty strict about what they're doing.
Yeah. So like Kevin was saying, given this language, would we be able to allow for like a design locate that is further, further out, or would that maybe be something we need to insert in here?
Yeah, we, I think we need to insert, clarify.
Okay, and then, uh, do you think we, we would probably need to do a little more research to see if there are state?
Yeah, I haven't done that.
Okay.
Lori sent this, I think, Friday, I didn't, I was out, so I didn't see it till this morning, so I tried to get it done for you guys, but.
Yeah, so.
Check with the state.
Yeah, when I was doing this, Bob, five, six years ago, uh, Interstate Commerce Commission ruled everything that was done, eight-one-one, NIPSCO, no matter who it was, they had their fingers in it, so that's where all that is coming from. Any construction we had to do, basically, they ruled the roost.
Okay. Yeah, I think if we can get those things figured out.
I, I was just gonna ask, just big picture, is the town issuing permits for them to do the individual actual borrowings? Because I don't know that the town can limit the number of locates, but if you limit the number of your permit side, then they can only go so fast on the construction, and if they realize that they're calling locates way too early and they have to continue to redo it, that's labor work on their end, that might force them to slow down on the, on the permit side. You know, if you, if you hold the permit side, they may look slow down on the locate side.
That's a good idea.
Just something to think about.
Okay.
You know, kind of force their hand, because they don't want to do all the work, they don't want to call and locates three times, it, it's time consuming.
Sure.
So.
Okay, good plan. All right, uh, yeah, we can look into that, and then if we can look into those things, and, you know, like I said, this is, obviously, it's a, an issue that's happening now, so if we need to call us, you know, another meeting, in the meantime, we can, we can do that.
Okay.
So, okay, any other questions or comments on this ordinance approval?
No.
All right, then we will, we'll table that for now. All right, anything else?
No.
All right, thank you, sir. I'll skip over again. Parks Department, nothing that I'm, actually, hang on. It's somewhere in here.
Oh, that's huge.
Yeah, my stuff's a lot of whack here. Okay. Uh, yeah, so the Parks Department is celebrating the official opening of the new freedom basketball court at Drazer Park, uh, with the ribbon cutting ceremony at Saturday, July nineteenth, at nine AM. Uh, the event's open to the public, I've seen they've been posting it on Facebook. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, you're encouraged to bring your own basketballs and try the court out of it, it looks really nice, so, um, he's got some donors listed here, and I'll, I'll read those off, um, that helped fund it. So St. Paul Lutheran Church of Kouts, uh, Gallup's Shell Station, Midwest Center, Felster Milling, Kouts Line Club, Lions Club, Georgia Pacific, uh, R E M C, Operation Roundup, Legatus Platt, and the Kouts Economic Development Commission, so definitely appreciative to all of them for, for helping make that happen. That's gonna be really nice, so. And as far as parks, that's all I am aware of. Police Department.
Oh, Wyatt, Port July links rather well with, uh, early alcohol for service, so I don't think we have water explosions, but short of that, we're gonna be fine.
All right, appreciate it. Uh, Planning Commission, nothing, Building Inspector, he's not here, nothing that I'm aware of. Stormwater Manager.
Uh, you guys are all aware of the, the warthoo that was up, located along forty-nine, created this thing yesterday afternoon, that's been repaired and taken care of. Um, we've reached out to payers, trying to get some pricing to pay our blocks, that we've had some stormwater, um, work done, uh, with little to no success currently on getting payers to call us back, they're busy, so just working on trying to get pricing, and it'll probably be late this year forward to do that.
All right, appreciate that. Uh, E D C. Nothing that I'm aware of. Fire Department.
Everything's good. Sorry about that. Uh, we have a firefighter that just graduated from art school, one that graduated from T school, and, uh, looking forward to Pork Fest. And as we have also already assisted lacrosse last Wednesday, Thursday, I think it was, Thursday, pretty much exhausted, majority of our resources that he recovered us while we were helping there, so. That's it.
All right, appreciate it. All right, uh, so we're now at new business, so first on here, we have a, a planning commission appointment, now, I'm not gonna try to pronounce the last name, but it's Benjamin, uh, he was over in Mustang Trail, is he here? Okay, uh, no, no, is anybody here, no?
No.
Okay, so I, I think what I would like to do is just reach out to him, um, if Tim and I can, can meet with him, or?
He couldn't be here, because he's a newspaper reporter.
Okay, gotcha. But reach out to him and just, you know, get his perspective on things, and get to know him a little bit, um, and then, and consider it from there, so, um, but he has applied for a spot on Plan Commission, so, uh, we'll table that until we talk to him, if that's get everybody, okay? All right. All right, next we have Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven. So this is a resolution recognizing the public service of CJ Whitmer, so he is our council member, uh, this is his last, last meeting with us, because he's moving on to bigger, better things, so, uh, we have this resolution recognizing his public service, so I'm gonna read this off. So, whereas CJ Whitmer serves his last day as a town council member of the town of Kouts on July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and whereas CJ Whitmer has demonstrated his commitment to public service, uh, by serving the citizens of Kouts as a member of the town council since January first, two thousand and twenty-one. And whereas during his forty years and seven months of service as a member of the, uh, Kouts Town Council, he has shown himself to be committed and bettering the quality of government in the town of Kouts, and whereas it is a, the desire of the Kouts Town Council to publicly commend and congratulate CJ Whitmer for his public service to the citizens of the town of Kouts as a member of the Kouts Town Council. Therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Kouts Town Council that CJ Whitmer should be, and is hereby congratulated and commended for his service to the citizens of the town of Kouts. The town council thanks him for his service, hard work and dedication, uh, to the betterment of the quality of government in the town of Kouts as a member of the Kouts Town Council, and wish him well in his future endeavors. Uh, let's see, all of which having been resolved by the council of the town of Kouts on this fourteenth day of July, two thousand and twenty-five. So, having read that, do I have a, a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven?
So moved.
Have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nobody opposed? All right, that motion carries. CJ, we got this for you, so. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Good working with you.
Likewise.
You can have that, we'll sign it afterwards.
Okay.
That, that's what you get.
I appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
It's been an honor serving, uh, on the town board, having worked here my, my whole life. Certainly, I mean, for CB, you know, the town board, early years, but it's been a pleasure, uh, serving on the board, and, um, I can add that, a whole bunch of years on the police department too, so.
Yeah.
I feel pretty good about, um, giving back to community, so.
Yeah, everything you've done is definitely appreciated, and, you know, working with you, you're just, everything that you contribute was always well thought out, and, um, so just really appreciate it, and it's evident that you actually care about what you're doing here, so.
For sure.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve, this is a resolution recognizing the public service of Tammy Whitmer. She's leaving us too. All right, so, I'm gonna read this one. So Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve, whereas Tammy Whitmer serves her last day as a public employee of the town of Kouts, uh, June tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and whereas Tammy Whitmer has demonstrated her commitment to public service by serving the citizens of Kouts as a code enforcement officer from March of two thousand and nineteen to August of two thousand and twenty-three, and office manager from February of two thousand and twenty to June of two thousand and twenty-five, and whereas during her four years and five months of service as a code enforcement officer, uh, for the Kouts Town Council, and her five years and four months as office manager for the utility department, she has shown, shown herself to be committed to bettering the quality of government in the town of Kouts, and whereas it is the desire of the Kouts Town Council to publicly commend and congratulate Tammy Whitmer for her public service to the citizens of the town of Kouts as a code enforcement officer and office manager. Therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Kouts Town Council that Tammy Whitmer should be and is hereby congratulated and commended for her service to the citizens of the town of Kouts, and her commitment to the betterment of the quality, uh, of government in the town of Kouts, and wish her well in her future endeavors, all of which having been resolved by the town council on the town of Kouts on this fourteenth day of July, two thousand and twenty-five. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve?
So moved.
Have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That motion carries, so, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, again, as CJ is always very evident, that you're very passionate about what you did here, and, um, there's no, no question there, so much, much appreciated. Congratulations. Thank you. All right. But then that, all right, any other matters? We got a lot of people here, doesn't happen all the time. Jessica.
Hi, I'm John Coke, I'm over at, uh, five oh five Woodland Avenue, and I haven't been here for a while, so I don't know if you guys have discussed this already or not, or heard anything. Probably the last few months, water coming into my house smells, it's almost like swamp water.
Have you cleaned your water heater?
My thing is cleaned all the time, it's, it's not just the hot water, it's cold water too. It's like a swampy smell. You know, I don't know what's been going on with the water stuff going on, you know, you got all this going on, and you know, the.
I can put in a work order and have the guys come and check it out for you.
Yeah, it's just the minute you turn it on, and it's just a constant.
Sure.
All right?
I will do that first thing tomorrow morning.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And another thing, water bills, they kind of went up. I'm, I've been here for a lot of the meetings, and it was talked about, about eight to ten dollars a month, it jumped up forty-two percent. That's like forty bucks.
Thirty-five percent, but just the water portion?
Yeah.
Not the whole area though?
Is anything else that's gone up in there, this?
No.
Trash pickup or anything?
No.
No, that's all I'm saying.
Now, for the water project we're doing, in order for us to get the loan through the state, the state has to see that we're trying to recoup some of that money, and the only way we can do that is with rate increases, just on the water side only.
Oh, I understand that.
And they, and they told us, then we needed to start it, so we had a little bit of leeway before the project started, and the project is started, there is a big hole in the ground over there, and they're getting, they're, they're moving.
Okay.
So hopefully, the water will be better here by the end of next year, that's probably about when it's gonna be done, fall of next year sometime.
I look forward to it.
Yeah, we do, yeah, that's why the rate increase.
Okay.
So we can pay back the eleven million dollars we had borrowed.
Oh, I understand that, you know, that just that it was quite a jump.
Yeah, and we've been, so, we thought about it, thought about it, and, you know, we had to stretch the loan out quite a bit to try to let, lessen the impact, immediate impact on the, the residents as much as we can, so, that is basically as low as we could have gone while still accomplishing the goal, so, um, wasn't an easy decision to be made, but it was necessary, so.
You're still on the side of Chicago, sir.
Hopefully, never will be. All right, thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Will it ever go back down, or is that pretty much?
Uh.
At its goal from now on?
I, I imagine it'll be that way for a long, long time, and by the time this, this bill's paid off, this loan, inflation's gonna be, who knows, by then?
Um, I have a couple of pork fests, I'll tell you that.
Okay.
So, um, as far as I am aware, all of the applications with the town are fulfilled with all the amending documents, uh, other than those two signatures we need for the road closure. Um, insurance has been bound and turned in, um, porta potties are ordered, they'll be in the same place that they were last time, um, tents, tables, chairs, all of that stuff has been ordered, bands have been booked, um, vendors, I have probably ninety percent of them all booked, um, so everything's moving along really, really well, got a lot of sponsors on board, um, so if there's any other questions that you guys have for me, you have my email, you can send them directly, I'm gonna be at the next town meeting if you have any other concerns for that. But there's one issue that I want to put, um, forward into the future. So, it's always just kind of been a, um, I don't know what you would call it, a gentleman's agreement as to what Pork Fest has done in town, as far as where we set up vendors, what we do, how we operate things at, you know, for the festival. I'd like to have some, for next year, I'd like to have some kind of direction in writing as to what we can and can't do. More for us, and also for you, because it's going back, next year is gonna be our fiftieth anniversary, so on and off, I know for some years, um, but there's always just been that kind of, well, this is what we do, and I'd kind of like to put it in writing for the both of us, so that way we know this is what Pork Fest can and can't do in the future. You know, if there's any squabbles or anything like that, we can work those issues out, but that's something I'd like to start working on after the first of the year for next year.
Do you have a list of things you want and don't want to do?
Not necessarily, because they're, it, it, they're just kind of things that were passed on to me, that's saying this is what we normally do, um, but I don't know if there's anything that are issues, you know what I mean? I know, like, for example, um, the vendor village that opened up down there, I've yet to talk to her, um, I know that she's gonna have vendors in her home parking area, but I'm gonna be putting vendors on the sidewalk, which is what we've always done, the sidewalk is owned by the town, and that's the area that we can use. The sidewalk is owned by the town and that's the area that we can use. So I wanna avoid any future confrontations where if a, a business owner says, hey, you know, we wanna do something here, but we've already scheduled something to be there. Yeah. Those kind of things. So I don't have specifics at the moment, I just kinda wanted to put the bug in your ear that, you know, coming up. That's something I wanna, I wanna talk about.
Yeah, I think that's something that can be discussed, I don't know how other entities do it, you know, it'd be, I could understand a business owner wanting to utilize the space in front of their business.
Well, would you, would you accommodate for the doorway and uh, so many feet on the side, obviously?
Yeah.
If they're gonna be open?
Yeah.
You know, we have a few businesses that have closed. You know, this year I might put something in front because it's a vacant building. Next year, that vendor, I'll have to inform them, hey, if something else opens up in here, I can't butcher it. But you know, those are the kind of things that, you know, I don't know if it's a resolution, if it's an ordinance, I have no idea any about that, but at least we have something set in motion that says, I know, okay, I can tell that business owner, I'm allowed to do this, but I'm not allowed to do this.
Yeah.
That kind of thing.
Gotcha, okay. Alright, yeah, it's something that I'll definitely can discuss and, and figure something out.
Yeah. And like I said, next year is gonna be the fiftieth anniversary and we're looking at doing something really big.
Gotcha.
Really big.
Okay. Yeah, um, and I think the sooner you can share your plans with us, the better.
And I know one of the topics that has come up in the past is um, the cost of what the police department being out there.
Yeah.
So it's those, obviously, as you all know, after tonight, I'm not in real capacity to have these conversations from, as a board member here, but uh, just as you guys were having those conversations, just keep in mind.
Yeah.
Well, believe me, I've been working on it.
That's a huge expense to.
I've been working on it.
Alright, thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. So I've never held one so far, I don't know if I have to stand or say, cause not only did both. So I actually own Couts vendor village. I, I'm probably owning from Family Express.
Yes.
Um, so um, I have done things in my parking lot and that's why I'm kind of here to try to figure that out. As Richard owns the building um, in the parking lot and I think he's on the verge of owning cronies as well, or already owns it, I'm not too sure. I guess I'm just trying to figure out like the ordinance of using my parking lot for events and how that goes all play. Since it is private property, is what Richard said, and just like um, Rico said is private property. Um, I'm not like saying for Pork Fest, because I've already done two events and I'm trying to figure out what is technically allowed, what isn't allowed. Because I went in to turn application in to do um, something by Pork Fest and it would be great actually if you had people on the sidewalk this year, as in other years I saw that wasn't that far down into town. But I was hoping to use the parking lot. In good faith, I gave in back. Maze, everything I made for vendor fees that they gave me have gone back to um, the Couts food pantry. Uh, the second time, Humane Indian Wildlife. But um, I have a bit, a letter from the business owner that he couldn't make it today, he's in Canada. He wanted to give to you guys. But um, with that, like I went and talked to the town and they were requesting that each one of my vendors um, get background checks and also pay a vendor fee and have insurance when. I have insurance on the whole, obviously the building and parking lot, but then also for that day, I have it for that event, specifically for that event, insurance outside. And then so does Richard, the owner, he has obviously um, insurance on the whole thing and he's letting me use it. But um, with that, now all of a sudden they changed to the fees. Uh, they want fifty dollar background check and twenty-five dollars for a vendor. Which that's kind of hard to do when, you know, a lot of them are small vendors, they, fifteen of them live in Couts. I have people in my store local in Couts. I know they're talking about outside, but um, I don't see why we're charging that. As Pork Fest people, they don't, I was told, they don't have to have background checks. They don't have to have vendor fees. I mean, that's a lot for a small town to charge. We don't have the publicity that Velvo has to even have people come out. Like, so I'm sitting here sponsoring ads, doing all this, I'm spending time, I have four children, I have a store, you guys know me from Family Express, like I am, go, 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 go. I didn't make a penny off any of these, in good heart, I literally returned it to the town. I have a booth inside where people can donate and we're sending it back to the town. I just don't, I just don't understand why, if it's private property, why we're requesting background checks for anyone selling, so would that be husband and wife? Cause now that's a hundred and twenty-five plus my fee. As, you know, I'm trying to do in good faith of get back to the community, trying to have something small. The kids love it, the kids love being up there, I mean. So, and then I'm just not understanding why that wasn't in the past. I've signed up for events out here, I've never had a fee, never had to do a background check, so I'm not sure where this is kinda coming, but it kinda feels like. I'm getting like thrown like at the wall and Pork Fest doesn't have to do it and you know, another one at the church didn't have to do it, but now I am going on my third one. I mean, if there's no this, no that, I mean, can we like put it in writing or something that like, hey, I can't have food there, I can't have this, I can only, or I can only have craft vendors? Or how does that really work with it being public prop, or, sorry, private property? And I do have that letter from him stating that he is allowing me to use his, that he wanted to give me, give to you guys. I don't know if I.
Yeah.
You guys, sorry.
Yeah, come on up.
I'm sorry, I'm like, I don't.
You're good.
I don't speak very well, guys.
You're doing good.
So I'm like, I'm not a public speaker, I would never do good at anything like this, guys.
Nah, you're doing great.
May I comment, as far as Pork Fest is concerned? So the way I look at it, your, that property is yours, you can do whatever you want in that parking lot area. I'm not charging you anything for that. We're just gonna put the vendors on the sidewalk.
No, and I would like that, no, I'm, I'm okay with that.
But we do pay rental fees for the park and I have to collect uh, health insurance information and.
Right, I had to.
Insurance information and, and I'm with you.
But I'm just not sure why I have to, if I'm on private property, I went around and I can charge them fifty dollars.
All I'm saying is.
But you don't, you know, like that's just kinda weird, cause we don't know where your vendors are coming from either, like. But mine, fifteen in my parking lot at my last event were from Couts. I mean, everyone lives in Couts, so now we're just charging our residents to pretty much set up in the parking lot for a small business. Who knows if they're really gonna make seventy-five dollars or if I even charge twenty-five dollars to try to recoup the insurance fee and the port party for them? I don't know if that's gonna even recoup anything that.
Yeah, hence the reasoning, I wanted to have that conversation about what festivals can and can't do or private property, you know?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
I'm a vendor myself. And uh, I know, we've never had a problem with the police having to be there. In fact, we've had the police walk through, hey, how are you guys doing? Oh, everything's good and they go about their business. You know, like he's renting, you know, public, you know, public properties, I get the fees. He's happened to use public facilities, I get those fees. She's renting them on private property, so like, I don't understand. While I have to get insurance on my own space, on top of paying all these fees, which that makes no sense to me, while I have to get my own insurance when there's the owner of the, the parking lot or the renter gets it. Then she gets the event, then the owner of the property gets it, now I have to get it? That makes no sense.
Yeah. So I'm not, I have to look at the ordinance myself, I'm not, I can't tell you, no, I'm familiar with the, the language of it or, or the, all the requirements, some of you, some of you may be more familiar with it, I'm, I'm not. So I can't necessarily answer your questions, right? But I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, it's just a little bit steep as seeing that we're small businesses, I'm trying to do very community oriented things, trying to give back to the community, all in good faith. We brought two carports over to the food pantry and gave them a cash donation.
Yeah, you're doing good steps.
And I'm, I'm literally trying, we had the ice cream truck um, from Couts there for free. We gave everyone that is, like Johnny Ellis was supposed to be out there, he was gonna have a free booth. That hair person, but her mom came into town. Juliette Sizzards was right there, she's like, I, I don't know, but you need to go sit there and talk to them, like. Because it just, you know, if you sell something for like low, like people do three D prints out of their house, like five dollars, but their increase is gonna be so high that like, the kids out here need something to go do. Like, go get ice cream, just go have fun, like a fun day or something. I know you guys don't do anything like in the park department, but I came and I've done vendor events in Portage, Hoover, Velvo, and I've never had to give fees to a town, especially on something that was private property. I'm just trying to make the community just a little bit, a little bit more fun, the kids really seem to enjoy it with everything out there.
Yeah.
You know, this time I wanted to try to get, you know, um, and actually with Pork Fest, all my vendors that have been there from May and June, wanted to be there for August. And then we were thinking about with all the local businesses in which I talk to them, trying to do like a scavenger hunt for the kids or something like that. You know, and then maybe Humane Indiana, bring the snowy owl out, like, you know, Harry Potter style theme and you know, we can pass out candy and you know, just, just give the kids something fun to do out here. Because I've been here two years and I just see them coming to Family Express and get icees and they're like, there's nothing to do, and I'm like, okay, we gotta change this.
Yeah, so, yeah, so just as much as we want businesses to be successful and, and thrive and, and do well and, and the people that you were bringing into your business to, you know, help support it. We also wanna keep people safe and everything too, so.
Right.
I think it's fair to, to say, hey, let, let us look at the ordinance.
Okay.
And, and, and see what, what it looks like for, you know, from our perspective.
I just feel like a little discriminated, like, cause he's, it's definitely, like, it's, I understand it's Couts event, but it's not the town council running it, is what I was told.
Right.
And then I've been told otherwise, that it has nothing to do with the town, the town don't make anything of it. But he don't have to do it for his vendors.
Yeah.
So why am I doing it when I'm here three hundred and sixty-five days paying rent and all these taxes on everything and trying to support it?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I don't necessarily pay for each individual vendor, but we do pay for everything else that's going on.
No, no, I get that.
The bans, the million dollar insurance, the, so, yeah. I don't give it for free.
Oh, I know, I know, but I'm just saying, like, your vendors don't have to go into the town and get a background check. They don't have to pay a vendor fee. So I don't feel like mine.
But now I do?
I understand.
Yeah, so, so yeah, let us look at it.
I'm just saying, we need to make it fair or even, or something.
Is there currently an ordinance?
There's, yeah.
Cause my suggestion would be allow me to add their parking lot as vendors underneath the Pork Fest at no charge. So they're underneath of my umbrella for this year.
Always have been for the Pork Fest.
For that parking lot, cause it's private property. Okay, so then for this year, all of your vendors in your parking lot.
I already have insurance on it, I already.
No, 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 I understand. You, the, the fees and, and everything that you're talking, they're, they're charging you? Can this year, they be?
They always have been, the Pork Fest, we don't, we haven't ever charged the Pork Fest vendors anything.
And they don't need to do the background checks?
No.
Okay, so any other year, like, I understand Pork Fest, but any other day?
After that.
I have to get a background check, is that what you're saying?
That's good.
Yeah, so the way, yeah, apparently the way that Pork Fest currently is.
Yeah, look over it.
So let's look over it, we'll put our heads together, we'll, we'll talk. We'll talk. We'll all be, we'll all be buddies. Yeah.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with, I don't have a problem with what you're saying. I think it's great for the community itself. I just think as myself, you know, like, all these other, you know, insurance policies are happening.
I hear you.
And, and I'm a little hole in the wall compared to, you know, the Pork Fest.
I know exactly what you're, what you're saying and referring to, so let, let us look at the ordinance and, and see where, where we're at and what we, what we can do, okay?
Alright, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, cause you, we, we wanna see you guys succeed, okay? I don't think there's anybody that doesn't, so. Got it?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Well, no.
You got, you're thinking.
I was just gonna say, I'm a vendor at her store and I also do craft shows. I do the Couts Christmas open house. And if, like, fees like that, I can't afford.
True.
Like, I'm lucky if I make, say, a hundred dollars in one show. So there goes my whole profit, everything. And, yeah, I mean, I just, I mean, if that's the case, I'm almost like better off to go do shows outside of town here.
Yeah.
But I want, like, I have a lot of customers here in town that buy my stuff. And I've grown up here, so it's just like, I hate to, you know, have to go to another town to do stuff.
True. It makes sense for you to, to set up here.
And I also.
Yeah, it's a little hard, like I said, Velvo would've been, you know, maybe, you know, turning them a hundred bucks a vendor, you know, cause they just have so many people there, but we don't and.
Sure.
I've just been trying to, you know, like I said, bring those fees to like good terms for every time I do something. I'm not making anything and that does make or break next year if I have to do this of closing my store ultimately in December.
Yeah.
And I know the, I know the landlord don't want me to do that, I mean, and I know a lot of people don't, a lot of old people have definitely said, hey, this helped me out with my pocket with buying birthday gifts, food, you know, anything.
Yeah.
So.
So, okay, well, yeah, we will, I'd imagine everybody up here will redo it. CJ is probably not, but if he wants to, he can. But yes, we will.
Thank you.
I'll do some reading and we'll talk.
Thank you.
Alright. Anything else from anyone? Alright, do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Alright, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright. Thank you.